Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board of Pledge of Allegiance through the life of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joseph Britton? Joseph Britton? Rachel Schlesky is here, Kate Keneva here, Gladys Cooper. Richard Jannelli. Patrick Johnston.
Here.
Frederick Carruth. Dave Matrana. Emmanuel Palmeiras.
Perry Also here.
Ralph Dejefessa. Amy Salina. Here.
A recognition.
The, um, we had a, we had a celebration last Monday, was it?
Yes.
The masses come back to the board to be recognized, they received a certificate, but it's award that's given out throughout the state of Connecticut, it eats at under sixty-nine districts by the superintendent, much like the cable awards, except from the superintendent level, for their leadership and their positive influence in their schools and for making a difference as well, so. We're gonna read your name, if you're here, come on up, I'd like to shake your hand and thank you for coming.
Hi, so from Broadview Middle School, Jessica DePalma and Sean Donovan.
It's a big deal for him. You might want to do something by, uh, Tom's here, Mom and Deborah take the photo.
Are we talking?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. We'll start with a lady, um, Jessica DePalma is just super amazing, every morning she does my job, she goes to the announcements, and she reads them off every day, telling the kids what they have to do, what's new in the building, she's also in a dance, we've been dancing for a hundred years, right? But she's two hundred years, and she's amazing, yes, too, she gets it from a lot, but the best part about her, she's also actively an extraordinary, she's an incredible student, she's well-rounded, we're just very proud, my personal joke is, I can't wait to be like her when I grow up, because she's just an amazing young lady. So, and I know her aunt is here to represent her, and if you can just take a round of applause for the woman. This young man in a great-looking suit is Sean Donovan, we're very proud of Sean. Sean, you know, just like, excuse me, this is gonna sound a little, you know, boys kinda be a little rocky sometimes, but when they pull it together, it's so amazing, this is what it looks like when they pull it together. And I'm just so proud of him, he's turned into an incredible student, he plays sports all over the place, and, um, he's, and also Sean has an attitude that makes me smile, he just makes me laugh, I don't know, just those goofy things, probably because his parents, but I think his father makes us look like my house, but he's such an amazing young man, we're just very proud to have him, he's gonna be academically successful because his mother has to be a social studies teacher at Broadview Middle School, Dan Donovan, and his dad is the principal of Danbury High School, so poor Sean, but if you can give him a round of applause, please.
Thank you.
Picture time, picture time.
For Rogers Park Middle School.
Oh, no picture time, not, not picture time.
We can do that, we'll do the announcements and I won't do, I won't do pictures. Sorry, I was trying to talk. Rogers Park Middle School, Elvaya Fajardo and Igor Silva.
They're not, it'll make tonight.
Okay. You can tell us all about.
Tell you all about, so Igor Silva is a very thoughtful, resilient young man who at the age of twelve, when asked after months of deliberation, made a courageous decision to leave Brazil, to move to the United States with hopes for more opportunities to flourish and be safer. He has worked tirelessly to learn English and exited ESL in one year. He went from no English to excellent. He, his commitment to doing well academically is complemented by his empathetic and altruistic nature towards peers and adults, making him well-liked at Rogers Park. He is true, he's a true example of a well-grounded individual. Igor has a very bright and limitless future ahead of him, we're very proud for him to have had his award. Elvaya Fajardo is an exceptional young lady who excels academically, she is active both in and out of school, in only four years of classes she earned a black belt in Taekwondo, two very big overachievers. After being recruited at the end of sixth grade, she became an active participant in the ESL program, and will continue in the upward bound program at DHS, working to prepare herself to attend college. She has spent her summers and throughout the school year doing community service projects, and she constantly finds ways to become a better person and to push herself outside of her comfort zone, so we're also very proud of her, so, sorry they weren't able to make it tonight, but they were, um, had to be, nice they went to Annapolis, thank you for it.
Thank you so much. And from Westside Middle School Academy, Sidney Vincent. Or, Vicente, I'm sorry, Men Charba Carpathian. That's close. Uh, Sidney was in the Wolf of Eden today, but she's a member of our Wolf of Studies Academy, she's one of those special quiet students, and, and she's, she leads by example by the, the great work that she does in school, she's been very involved with kindness programs, and showed wonderful spirit and knowledge that she shared in the school. Charba's in our STEM program, and we're proud for, for the work he's done, he's been recognized at the national level for his work in robotics, he was also finalist this year at the Community Science and Engineering Fair, I'm proud of that because I was his mentor on his project, we were growing some really cool bacteria in the lab, and he learned how to use a phorior intro for an spectrometer, he did some great analysis. FTIR. So, he worked in the lab, did some really amazing work, he is a member of our National Engineer Honor Society, also an honor roll student, so congratulations for all the great work you did. We have, uh, Danbury High School, Alicia Nergansit.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, Charba's parents are here, and school counselor, Mr. Garrett here.
All right, so from Danbury High School, Alicia Nergansit and Lucas Amaral.
They were the students from last time we were up there?
Yeah, we said a whole bunch about them.
Well said, well put. And from the, uh, from the ACE, we have Zinnia Cruz and Justin Escobeta, and they're not here either, but we appreciate them and their award. Yes, and did, um, did, do you want to do two pictures, or?
Sure, yes.
Will we have photography?
I'll take Carol.
He needs to get the light.
Not yourself. It is the superintendent's, you know what, that's true, so I used to do it, it's not me, it's just the superintendent's.
Sixty million pixels. It's okay for him, it's sometimes tough. Thank you all so much for the great job. Hey, public participation. The first one up? Yanni Espina, Espinal. Hello, sorry about butchering your name.
Thank you so much for having me here, my name is Yanni Espinal, um, I'm so happy to finally, finally meet a, maybe wake me up by AM. I'm here because I wanna talk a little bit about, what is the reason that kids don't wear, um, school, first, a uniform for school? I have a couple reasons of why I think, like, to be a mom of three kids, it's better if we have a uniform for my kids. My son Joshua, very knowledge, is on modesty school, I have two daughter and great blend in elementary school. I know every year it's like three, two or three days free taxes in Danbury and Connecticut to buy clothes for school year, but when we go pay, it's not making, it's a lot of money. I go sometime to the store and buy clothes, and I buy like four or five things, when I go, even at forty percent off, when I go to pay, the bill is almost three hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, and I see a lot of, and I see a lot, it's a lot of money. I have a situation, um, last year, my mom got breast cancer and I had to quit my job, we only survived when my husband, honey, and when I, um, when it's time to go, like, in September, when my son starts school, and I put all the winter clothes out, only two pants and three hands, and we don't have much money to buy clothes, and I had to go and buy clothes in Goodwill, and I feel like I'm on very stuck. So, clothes is very expensive, I had to buy for three kids, twice a year, clothes, for spring and summer, and for fall and winter, winter clothes, it's so expensive. If the kids wear a uniform, we only need two, two uniforms, we had a hard time for my girl, every night I come home late from work, and we had to figure out which clothes you're gonna wear tomorrow, all the girls say, oh, I want these pants, these pants don't match with the shirt, we cannot wear this, it's because it's gonna be cold outside, or when it's hot, they wanna wear like, uh, when it's cold, they wanna wear like, um, summer clothes, and for me, and talking with a lot of parents, it's so hard to, I know a lot of parents who had to buy clothes in Goodwill, too, for their kids. One of my nieces crying because the kids say, oh, your clothes is not fancy like my clothes. And I think it's, it's more safe for the kids, because everybody's gonna recognize in the, uh, in the street, or they know the kids from school because they wore a uniform. So, um, sorry, I just tried to spray and lay, it's much easier for parents to have the kids wear a uniform, and save a lot of money, save a lot of time, it's not easy with three kids, buying clothes twice a year, it's really, really hard, some family can do it, it doesn't matter, but some family, there's a lot of family that don't have money to do that every year. And the kid's growing, it's like, I can save, my daughter is five, and the other one is three and a half, and I can save the clothes for the three and a half, because I have to throw the clothes away, the clothes get damaged, they get stained, they get marked, they paint, they rip because they playing outside, it's all, I ha, I can save the clothes for my, uh, little daughter, because, by a year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, please.
Okay, uh, so the only name on the participation list, is there anybody who's here, not put down the name that would like to speak? Anybody? Okay, moving, thank you, moving on to the consent calendar.
I move that the Board of Education approves the items on the consent calendar, exhibits nineteen dash seventy-six through nineteen dash eighty as recommended.
Seconded by Mr. Petra Fisa, any discussion?
Uh, just a second, I'm actually marked as attending the, uh, the five fifteen finance meeting, and I'm not, I was not there, so.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure.
Okay, so, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstain, motion carries. All right. Student representative.
Hello, I'm Gabby, I'm part of the, uh, BOG at Danbury High School. School-wide events, junior prom took on the theme of Starry Night, took place on April twenty-sixth at the Portuguese Cultural Center, and was a great success. Senior prom is this Friday, May twenty-fourth, at the Amber Room, and will take on the unique theme of Iceball. Graduation is fast approaching, the ceremony is set for Wednesday, June nineteenth at five PM. The last date for seniors is June eleventh, and the senior trip to Six Flags New Jersey takes place on June twelfth. The rest of the school year will be utilized for graduation rehearsals. Yearbooks were distributed today, students of all grade levels received their books without hassle during our new flex period. International nights have placed at DHS on Friday, May seventeen, there were songs performed in other languages, traditional dances from people of many ethnic backgrounds, and much more. The celebration of Danbury Arts, our Coda, took place on May eleventh, and had great performances, artwork, food, fun, for people of all ages, and then as for clubs. The National Honor Society Spring Induction Ceremony for new members will take place tomorrow at seven PM. The juniors being inducted were selected for their outstanding achievement in academics and community service. Fifty new members were inducted into Mu Alpha Theta, Danbury High School's Math Honors Society, last night. The ceremony took place in our new Black Box Theater. The Little Hatters preschool class of twenty thirty-two had their graduation today, um, great job to the staff and students who helped run the program throughout the year. As for sports, the Danbury Girls Track and Field Team were named the twenty nineteen FCX Champions tomorrow, today, ending the event with one hundred eighty point five points. Grace Lang and Micah Chen were honored as Scholar Athletes in Suddington on May fifth, Grace will attend Boston University while Micah will Cornell. The Boys Lacrosse Team finished their season with a ten-six win over Bevel, Danbury's Derek Rivers received a Ruden Report Player of the Week award on May ninth, and the Boys Volleyball Team will compete in the FCX semifinals tonight at seven at Staples. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Hi, and, no presentations, action items.
I move that the Board of Education accept the April two thousand nineteen Operating Results Analysis, General Fund Grant Projects in accordance with nineteen dash eighty-one.
Seconded by Mr. Britton, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries.
Patrick, I should have gone down there for half a second.
Absolutely, um, no, I just wanna update the board, we have been in touch with the city about some of the issues we're having in our current budget here related to our special education costs, and the city's been on notice, and I think we're, we'll be okay, but it's just gonna be, we're gonna probably, you know, park it on a dollar or somewhere we get to the end, so, it's, uh, it's tight, I said that in my report, I just wanna read it, read that now, it's been, it's been more challenging than I'd like it to be. Okay. Yeah, we've, the numbers are.
Yeah, I mean, your enrollment's contributing to it, we're having some transportation overloads we're covering, and there's a lot of things that have been juggling, and April, April health plans were, well, seven hundred thousand dollars higher than the year prior, so, that was a little.
So the Board of Education accept for second reading and adoption the following policies as contained in the Agenda nineteen dash eighty-two.
Seconded by Mr. Petra Fisa, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries, oop, I'm staying. Mr. Jannelli abstains from, uh, the vote on nineteen eighty-two. Motion carries.
Let the Board of Education accept for first reading the following policies as contained in the Agenda nineteen dash eighty-three.
Seconded by Ms. Salina, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain. Mr. Jannelli abstains from nineteen dash eighty-three. Motion carries. Nine, nine, yeah, Jannelli on nineteen dash eighty-two, nineteen dash eighty-three, thank you, Sam. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody, uh, May ninth, uh, if you were up at, uh, Danbury Day, Rachel, I'm here, somebody, Joe was there, I thought it was a joke, it was a, a good gathering, it was the night that they spent all night waiting, and so people were hungry and they were there, so they came in on our session, which was good, but we did get a lot of folks there, uh, we did a presentation on, uh, some of our activities, we talked about the collaboration we're having with the hospital, with the DECO students, we talked with, we recognized the schools of extension, uh, we also did some conversations about some of the laws, um, the mayor's there, he spoke about some things as well, we've had, we've had some feedback since then, all right, um, today, as a matter of fact, we think that they'll have a budget next week, is that?
It's at least a chatter up there, they're, they're trying to do the budget first ahead of some other things and deal with that, and so, I mean, like, June first, session ends actually June fifth, so it'll be nice to get it done early if they can.
So that would be the budget, but then there's conversations about some of the things happening.
Yeah, but I mean, tolls won't impact, will impact us, us, but I mean, it won't impact the school district, obviously, once you get through that, that'll level one clarity, whole finance meeting.
So then, um, we'd have some clarity on budgets and.
Yeah, ECS, TRB, if you're, if you have to get that or not, also.
I did see something today that came across on specification, sent me, I don't know if they get a modification of that.
Yeah, it just came in.
It just came in, so.
I haven't had a chance to look, too much of the details of that.
No, but May ninth, I thought it was a successful, um, day, and it was pretty, the student mentioned Coda, I, I was there this, that side of, board members were there, Ralph worked there, and I was there, yep, the, the display was incredible, it was probably the best that I've seen, it really was a museum, um, and, uh, they put a lot of time into it, they were able to set up the evenings before, um, I talked with Rachel right in the day in the upper part, and kind of about it, just a quick background, uh, some years ago it started because there was a conversation about the arts, and with, the arts were really prominent, we heard a lot about the athletics, so there was something that brought me came in just to talk about and have, um, display the arts that we're having throughout the district, so you had the performing arts, and then you had, uh, the other displays, the robotics has worked into it, this year we had, the Black Box was used, uh, the studio was used, so next year we're talking about how they can enhance that so much as well. Uh, the board members were there, do you want to comment?
Yeah, I was, so I had a front row seat, obviously, because I was selling ice cream there, and, um, I was early setting up, and it's amazing to see all the teachers, like, um, just everyone, student volunteers, just really, um, there, passionate about the artwork and, and just, just like, and they were there from, you know, eight o'clock in the morning until we ended at like four, the night before, the, the day before they were there, and doing a bunch of stuff, and I like it, no offense to, to Broadview, we had it there for two years, but the high school, the feel there is just a, a different, a different feel, I was kinda front and center for, they have a modern rock band program, and I was right across from it, and these kids are playing, like, you know, the music, you don't, you don't think it's gonna, no offense, you don't think it's gonna be good, but like, when you, like, you're not from school, but I still look up, it sounds like the radio's playing, so, uh, kudos to all the kids there, and, and, and teachers and stuff, that they really, um, you know, put their heart out there, and they really dedicate a lot of time, time to it, and just, you know, aside from, you know, selling, selling ice cream, being a board member and, and seeing all that stuff there, really sends a pride of, 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 you know, the school and the district, because, I mean, all artworks from all over the district, so everybody comes together, so you get to see everything kind of in, in one place, which, which is rare, because we're so spread out, so many schools all over the district, but it was a great event, as always, um, sold a lot of ice cream, so that means a nice donation back to the school, so that, that, that's good, too.
Very nice.
I think also what I saw in Coda this year that was interesting, it was much more like a family-friendly event, so you're seeing like families with little kids in the stroller, there's a lot of, a lot of them to move around, um, the Danbury High School Culinary Arts Program was running, um, you know, a stand, so people could get lunch there, they could get burgers and hot dogs, so families can really plan, so the only suggestion we need to next year is really mark it as a family day event, almost like it's an outdoor festival, because if they continue to do a thing for high, I think it's a much better venue, and people could have spent like the whole day there, just looking at art, doing the music, doing the activities, and actually be able to share a meal there, so I think it was just really great, I made a little video post for that, and, um, the kids' artwork. The, the level of the art program at Danbury High School has, year after year, just increased, whether it's from the drum department or visual arts department, some of the work that I saw from our seniors, it's incredible, um, it brings me out of pride, because I used to be a major art three kid, um, that was the building I used to hang out at, and it's just really, really cool to see how it's just elevated the rigor of the work, and how little kids are right able, profilers are going full people's minds as they apply arts tools.
Follow up on that, Rachel, I'm sorry, I was gonna, Rachel was here, they had talked about that art, so what they're gonna do is select some, and get, um, frames, and then put them around here, which I keep, and change them up, so we'll get the same.
Ralph and Emmanuel pretty much had it all, I mean, the caliber of the work is just incredible, and there's so much of it, you know, the, the fact they put it up one night, they said they were going to take it down that afternoon, right? I ran into, um, the young man that we had seen last time, Lucas Amaral, gave one award, and like, he showed me his paintings, everything, I think, amazing, I mean, like, you know, he was a soccer player, and then he went to football, he was so excited about it, his parents were there, um, I, I just think the quality of work was incredible, and I did see the new band, you know, they're all nice, right? Yeah, really cool, it was really, yeah.
It was a lot of work, I guess.
Yeah, no, I know, that was my.
Joe actually sold it together, I think, for, for a lot of work.
No, they had people, you know, people were walking around, I saw you, I was in there, but, um, and I thought it was an awesome event, and it was a sunny day.
It was a good day, the weekend.
I know, it was. I know, it was.
Did anybody else have anything else that they wanted to add to...
One thing, DSABC, um, DSABC, the, um, Danbury Schools and Business Collective has changed its name, it's still BSABC, but it's Danbury Students and Business Collective.
Connection.
Connection. So, let's give it a correction, where does it exactly...
And business connection.
And business connection. Okay, thank you. And that's, the directors, we've all had a very nice, um, a number of, uh, of that, there's one that is, it's twenty-five, twenty-five years, twenty-five years. I mean, the stories are incredibly powerful. Now, if you were there, did you, did you have any comments?
Um, Glenn, Glenn Morin?
Glenn Morin.
And he came back, um, to, to speak about his experience with the Metro Program, the mentor was actually there, which is a surprise for him.
We often, the kind, right? Yeah. He's teaching in DC, he's teaching here, but he didn't, he was, it was quite a life for him, I think he really motivated. So, he just talked about how during his lifetime, how, um, that program really changed his focus, and made a real difference, substantive difference in his thinking, and, uh, kind of give it back, so he was very, 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 most...
There are a hundred, a hundred and seventy-six mentors in, in the program, um, which are businesses and, you know, the, um, people into the schools, and it's incredible. Some people involved there for twenty-five years, you know, artists and, and, and... It was really, really well-intended, and gave awards, and Glenn was awesome. He said, you know, if I hadn't had this man right here, he said, I would be probably, I wouldn't be standing up here in business, and today I'd probably stand up in arms, so it was something for me. So, it was really...
Very nice. All right, uh, moving on, discussion, budget and legislative updates.
Go ahead.
We've had a, kind of talked through that before. We did have the finance committee meeting, which was last week, inside the board pack, that is at least some, uh, rough outline for cuts and reductions that we're looking at going through. Um, we do think depending on which budget package comes out of the state, there is a, I don't call it as high as a million, as low as about two-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred thousand dollars, we'll have to make reductions still, based on the current cuts. Um, you know, we do see some of the new initiatives that will get dialed back, the, um, new math, the new math coaches will hold that issue to back, the art music, the PE teachers, um, but the, the issues we're still facing is, for example, K-five enrollment, I mean, typically we'll take a teacher or two off, we project, and, I mean, we're seeing numbers that are coming around in some of the schools that are, you know, large. There's a, a big group coming over from Millridge Primary, merging into KSI in fourth grade, Park Ave, Millridge Primary itself, too, so, I mean, but those aren't gonna change much, so I think those will be challenged up to deal with to get to the last. I don't see big savings in health this year. It's always been a bright area, and all good, we can, you know, dial that down, we just don't claim some fortunate trend anymore, right where we're projecting in January, which is, I guess, good for a projection, bad for us, for savings. So, legislative updates, Dr. South said they're hoping to get that in. Styrofoam tray bill is half dead, half alive up there. Um, they did house move along, like that at least is, we have many more in the school safety bill, that's still up there. Um, graduation requirements, no movement there, surprise there.
I think for the board's sake, we're still looking at this transportation, um, savings we can transport students around town, some of the, um, some of the magnet schools out of Danbury, and the, the efficiencies. My worry is, as I said to you a few times, those class sizes are gonna be higher than, than usual, um, at this point. We also have, you know, we've had the conversation about servicing all our students, that has been somewhat challenging, and keep ordering closely, um, still, still in front of us on going public. But next week, do we have a better idea?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a number. I'm shooting for July, I'm shooting for July, June, June first, but I'll see what they go on.
Just in, um, in reference to that styrofoam bill, the part of it that we know for sure is that, is that there's an exemption for schools. So, the restaurant industry, they still have this, the ban went through, but, um, schools are completely exempted. Yeah, so it went through with each...
Is that both Austin's sending now? I haven't heard, because originally it made through the House, I believe.
I think, I think it also, yeah, because I think today the article is word that it's become almost kind of done with the...
So, just wait until the governor, until the governor has to sign it yet.
Right, but I mean, just, they, they're very clear in the exemption of whether in the House, and they understand that the cost that passed on to school, especially more having all these funding issues, so the exemption was, um, agreed upon by both sides, Senate and House that needed to be there.
Lastly, I don't leave it, we are gonna pursue the biodegradable trays and at least explore them more. I think costs are gonna come down under about nine cents a tray versus three and a half for styrofoam. We're gonna keep working through that, it's not, I mean, I do see it as an issue, it's on the down. I mean, we go through, let's say, probably, you know, seven thousand trays a day, give it takes, so it's a waste issue. So, we're, I'm not gonna abandon it, I think we still need to, but I give them a lower cost, we'll figure it out.
Joe, do you want to talk to me about that? We talked to the board about the lunch program, is that all but the free schools all set, right?
Yeah, the lunch program will go, uh, the CEP provision, which is free breakfast, free lunch, that will be at all your schools except the high school, West Side, AIS. The high school's a possibility to go in, we're, we're leery to put it in because we really can't upend the program, have a run of deficits. SEDEXO guarantees a loss up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm really worried to reject the high school numbers, because we've made some assumptions with the King Streets, for example. One of the King Street schools was qualified, and it was close, you can actually merge two schools together to make your reimbursement work, so we kind of took those, those leaps of faith already in, so I add in high school, they're about thirty-eight percent, they like to be like forty-five, to be good, so I think maybe that could be a second year initiative. It will be approved by the state to put the high school in, it's just we have to make the decision to put him in, and I'm just, I'm leery that the program would take a significant hit, um, so that'll be...
Okay. Facilities update?
Facilities update, uh, since our meeting began, just received information...
Yeah, we got it, as you said, facilities for...
How you want, um, want to update? When we, when we looked at it through the lens of, of the expansion, um, one of the things was possibly creating, um, school on one of the campuses, and that was looked at, it is possible, I think, who's gonna look at it and say, is that something we want to pursue? Um, we did request a conversation with the mayor.
Yeah, and I talked to him actually last time.
Any, any use that?
No, we're still on a meeting, but we, I remember I spoke to Dan about it.
So, um, you know, the facilities committee has that, right? You all have it?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's...
Glenn did put it on, on the campus, um, it sits, um, it would be a building that looked like it was, um, the estimate was fifty to sixty million dollars, that's what you call it. And remember, we had a sixty, um, seven, sixty, eight percent, seven percent?
Sixty-four percent.
Six, let's say six percent reimbursement, so, you know, when we start adding additions, that was the conversation on all of these campuses, is it better to just create one all over the big? So, he looked at a middle school as a possibility, two stories, with approximately seven hundred, seven hundred fifty students, that would sit on the campus there, on the King Street site. And the only site that it seemed that it would, would work for undergrads, bus crews, and on safety, was, um, right as you approached buildings in the front area, would be the side...
What current two baseball fields are now, would those sit right there?
Yeah, they'd sit right there, and you'd have three, which are, you know, in some towns, I don't know, three schools on the same campus, uh, you know, typically they'd have the primary, they'll have an intermediate, and then you'll have the middle school. High schools are generally always tough, you know, along, um, so that would be a possibility there. Committee, that conversation, in fact, wanna look at that, and then what the next steps would be for the... We all, I didn't do any numbers on those other additions, which, which would create the space of the other buildings, um, to them, I think the reimbursement there and that is much different.
Yeah, it's a, could be a little lighter based on what you might, kids are redistricting around, that's a little more challenging, but in this, this scenario, you're, we're West Side, they take that bill, and that would become your elementary school, and then you then would have more space in the west side of town, and it would open up, but it's a complicated design, though, I mean, obviously, you can't go behind KSI, there's not enough room for a bus loop, and all those pieces for a middle school up and back there, um, so it's, it'd be a complicated site. It's, it's doable, Glenn did look at setbacks and zoning and where you would go, it does burn two stories up there, I mean, obviously, you'd have to go through the various channels on that, but, but it's not a case that it'd be restricted.
Seven, seven hundred fifty?
I think he said seven.
The one, the one he did was seven hundred, I mean, it's not, to get to eight hundred is not impossible, um, it's doable.
It's on the sheet here.
So, basically, it took basically, it's... It rebuilt, it rebuilds West Side?
West Side, on, on the direct move.
Yeah, you're, you're building West Side onto the campus.
You'd have an al, very large option...
I don't want, um...
The, uh, elementary, then, if, if that would double fruition, you have a large elementary that might...
If folks want to say, I don't really reject our amount enough, you know?
I think we should, we should...
Or do, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. Or, um, yeah, pick a date if you guys want, that's fine.
I don't know if we need, if this, this, if Glenn didn't come, anything else, is that...
No, that's, I mean, we've, we've since explored all of our, called open space that we have at our disposal to use, I mean, that would be...
Can you hold Joe's up?
We have, not going around looking for one.
Um...
Then we have the...
That adds the cost, yes, the, actually, a wire.
We, we own that property, we don't have to go spend seven hundred thousand dollars on it on the land, so, um, those are your options, you got. I think, hopefully, get the mayor and Tony to a meeting, that would be probably the best, best thing to do. Ralph will bring in screen.
Yeah, Ralph, you want to say, you guys want to throw a date out on that, we'd certainly get, totally don't lose that in the calendar.
Okay.
All right.
Do you want to do that now?
Don't matter, do you want, yeah, you want...
I'm just, uh, well, who else is not saying something? That's it, okay, so we'll pass it, and then we'll wait, so...
Okay, yeah.
I'll put out the, uh, the...
Yeah, I thought Gladys was gonna be there, she was...
Well, I'll get those, we need...
Yeah, it's Joe, it's you, it's Rachel, and Gladys, that's the...
Yeah, right.
And Fred, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay, we have, uh, information on SEDEXO food service agreement, that's a standard, and we have a five-year running agreement with SEDEXO, that's the last year, it's, that's a standard extension on your five-year contract that follows the, uh, the store price index on their increase, and that'll come back for, 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 standard, standard, this coming.
Good question, so this is just for the summer fee program, or is it overall for all?
This one is... I believe this one is, this, I, this is just some extension, that's right, because we actually just went through our procurement audit, and we just got the, I just got the approval for the extension contract, so yes, this is some, right?
Okay, good. And when is the entire contract?
Whole contract is up the following year, we're about to do it. Is that impacted by this new, the... No, it does, does, doesn't change, it wasn't chang, it doesn't change much. I talked to the state, because they were in last week for their audit, we only had three findings, which were remaining in school for our procurement received with SEDEXO, and there were really, you know, a couple signatures on, on whether the standard mean high school they have, there was no job titles, and it's really, you know, just small stuff. And, um, so, but because it's of the fifth year of the contract, it, it doesn't impact the bid, we have to redid it. We'll have to bid next year. The state wants to have a full process for bidding, it's actually a state document we put out, um, it has to go...
Next full year or next year?
Next, it'll actually come, you know, about the bid, probably about next February, I'd say, for the conference, for July one. Uh, we typically have a couple vendors that bid, on SEDEXO, obviously, we need one, um, but it's a state bid process, actually has to stay out longer than our current bid, I believe it has to stay out for like thirty days, our typical bids are fourteen days, there's a, they approve the documents out of the process, but it's...
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Chairperson's report. Um, so we have the Memorial Day Parade, and, um, I'm assuming for those of us who want to go, um, same location, Kennedy Avenue.
Don't you say they call, yeah, it's...
The little parking lot, right, that, that road right behind Kennedy Avenue Apartments is where we all met.
That's the way Kennedy first.
All walk, I, I, I don't have a car, I told them.
Wait, but, but, they're, I'm, I would...
Debbie will send something out, we'll get something from there.
Do I tend to...
Yes, the backside of, not on the main, not on the main street side, but the backside of Kennedy Avenue Apartments, that straightaway, those were pretty much, we just lined up with, with tire trucks and...
And I think it starts at nine, but, you know, it takes a while to start going, I think we get there at maybe thirty, but Debbie will send something out.
Yeah, yeah, they, they get there a little early to park and get a spot.
They're, they're walking down, and walk all the way...
Walk down the Rides Park.
Yep, so if you, you can, you can, you can park your car down there and get around.
Yeah, one way.
No, seriously, is it...
Yeah, yeah, we don't walk around.
Uber back.
Uber back. I can barely get one...
Gonna go littering. Okay, so, um, so if we're walking for that, I'm going.
I'm marching, but Bill picks out with you guys, I'm marching with my son as part of the cast of the musical.
Put your hand up.
There you go.
We want Martin. I know, he's, he's a lot of fun for us.
You can run a student, like, we're probably on the back anyway.
Probably back.
Yeah, too much risk for somebody running.
It was right down.
Yeah, we don't even, we don't even sign up anymore, so, like, okay.
Okay, um, we have a couple more announcements, the second one on this one is the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, or meeting dates are in the back of the War and Peace documents that we've got here, all of them, awesome, if anybody would like to look through that, there's a couple of Tuesday dates, um, and, uh, well, not that, that's in the back of our bigger court here. Um, tonight is Sandy Santos's last meeting, and...
Maybe, you know, we're pretending it's not.
Look at how much younger she's gotten, each and every, just being there is major...
I'll be back in the fall.
Until, yes, in the fall, since Sandy will be back in the fall, so she's taking the early summer.
I think he's...
Well, we'll be returning to the meeting. Uh, superintendent's evaluation meeting was changed from May twenty-eighth to June fourth at six PM.
So, next Tuesday, we'll, I'll get material out to you, that's my goal.
And I think, uh, I think that's it for, um, what's my stuff?
We have one before.
We have a meeting on...
Two meetings on the twelfth, two, seven, four.
So, yeah, and then, we just...
Well, yeah, so, we have a...
We have a meeting on the twelfth, and we, we only, one meeting, no, we have a meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Two, two in June.
Oh, yeah, I knew we had a second meeting, June twenty-sixth, we have a meeting.
Well, please, the retiree reception in the...
Yep, and when do we, when do we expect to know budget information, you know?
I'm, I'm hoping for June first, um, I mean, you know, also, I mean, obviously, Gallup goes down June fifth, um, so we'll be pretty bad.
There's a possibility that we'll have information for the meeting on the fourth, but not, or that's...
Yeah, I mean, as soon as...
Fourth is superintendent's evaluation, we don't have a meeting until the twelfth, so we should have...
Yeah, I would, I would say we'll pull a finance meeting if we can before then, give or take, yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be in front of that.
Okay, great, excellent. Okay, great. Ralph, I'm just thinking for sites, if folks had the Tuesday pencil, we could do it next Tuesday if you want.
Yeah, I'm so.
I'm not picking, still picking dates, but you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm meeting that.
I don't know. You guys, I mean, that's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
And now I think the only problem.
Hold on, hold on. What, what do we have, the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth was the superintendent's ballot and it was moved because there was a problem with that date.
Can we, can we do sites on the fourth?
Why not? We, yeah, we're.
Because I don't want.
We can back, back that with the superintendent's ballot. We want to do that.
That's the council.
Depends on that, so thirty.
Well, we don't need any council.
Ooh, I, I might be, I might be the council for the technologically section. I might be open. Depending if I can get everything through the agenda. How long, how long do you think we need for the, for the, um, for your thing, Ralph?
Yeah, so what about the twelfth?
Do you want, what do you want to do on the fourth at five o'clock? Because the superintendent's ballot is at six. Want to do five to six and six to one hour and then go to, can't do that one.
What about, what about the twelfth? Can we do five thirty to six thirty?
That works. That works.
And we have a meeting already in that home?
We have just a retiree at six thirty, retiree reception at six thirty if we do five thirty.
But the way the board, we're hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Facility, sites and facilities. So, so we'll, we'll put in sites and facilities, June twelfth, five thirty.
We need, we need, you know.
I, I think we've got, I think we've got what we need since.
Want to show opportunity if he wants to come?
Just engage.
And, you know, sure he will. Yeah, he's, he's gone through the hard sells.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a, a question about the annual meeting dates for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. There's a meeting on November twenty-sixth. That's awfully close to Thanksgiving.
It's Tuesday, right?
That's Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
It's Tuesday.
Oh, I feel like we do it all the year.
Yeah, I'll push it back. So, it's the.
Oh, we got to decide on stuff.
Joe's making cranberry sauce in the beginning. Homemade cranberry sauce. Great. He's got a body in his basement.
I just have one more thing.
Absolutely.
So, I want, we want to know if everybody's going to be okay on the board for retreat on September seventh, Saturday. It might start at noon. We go play four, go forth and retreat. And our neck, our first board meeting will be September eleventh. So, I think perfect. What?
December.
What is?
September.
That's a big one.
Only one nation. Only seven.
Okay, but not until the date.
That's real. I mean. Might be good if I'm there.
That's true. Oh.
Oh, don't make it.
But about September fourteenth.
That would be the following Saturday.
Oh, the Saturday.
Yeah, I don't, I'm going. Come on, you said don't base it on me.
I'm not basing it on you. You might say, do they? September fourteenth, all players. And, you guys say, this is Cheryl's, that it's a fun venue. That's true. I, I got a little bit of a venue we're going to go.
September fourteenth, twelve o'clock.
September, so I'm going to base the date right.
Yep.
Now, so we, we were making it at twelve o'clock on the seventh because you couldn't come till twelve, until twelve. Maybe come earlier.
Yeah, yeah, all day.
All day? No, I'm not going to twelve o'clock.
What time?
They probably do it fourteen early.
Yeah, that's what I see.
Four is the bar.
Nine, five. Nine, five, too early?
Nine's good by May.
Nine. January fourteenth.
Ready for lunch.
Do you have a venue?
Like eggs benedict or something.
Do you have a venue?
Debbie's helping me.
She is?
Yeah, I need to try. We're fun ones.
We're going to have a new middle school like King Street. The parking. Have the portable so they can AC it with.
And then one more thing. So, I'll be sending out the self-evaluation, the board self-evaluation in June. This, I'm going to get it sent to you and if you can keep that, we'll have those all set to go for September fourteenth. I spoke to Nick Cage and kind of facilitate.
Awesome.
So, nine fourteen is that board retreat?
Yes.
Nine AM.
Nine, nine, two.
One in the morning?
No. One in the afternoon?
I think that's going to be, well, we might, we might have to stay a little bit. We're going to Joe's house, right?
Absolutely. Come on over. I'd be more than happy to have you guys up. No problem. Yeah, we'll do, yeah.
You got the pool heater going?
Yeah, hot dogs, hamburgers, do it all. Stop.
That's SEDEXO.
Uh, run it on pop. Go to Costco. There you go. Dirk and Doug. All right. So, that finishes off that. Board reports, communications, comments. Anybody have anything to add for the bit of the order?
Can I talk about safety?
Mrs. Cooper is here.
She's actually giving you all the texts and told you what to do.
You let your. We thought you was coming for the motion for adjournment.
Just for me, a long decision.
No, I would just like to ask some questions concerning safety and I think as we lack the devices, we need to look at all aspects of safety for a long period. Um, South Street's foot, my question would be, at two thirty in the afternoon, there is no course in guard. Okay? And can you answer why not? And the reason it is, because I go that way every single day. If you're coming down South Street, going toward, uh, I'm going this way.
Toward, toward the Rives Park.
Okay, true, right, right, the park.
Yeah.
If the cars are coming this way, the truck, the other cars are coming down, turning onto Main Street, those people, they don't care about kids crossing that walkway. And I saw two kids almost get hit last week. And these people, all these people, they're driving New York, brakes on them. They drive like Maniac. And we need to do something to protect, you know, I know it's just a walkway.
Yeah.
But if you're behind the car and that car stops suddenly and that car is higher than your car, you can't see that kid when that kid pops up.
So, it's coming from the Rives Park?
Yeah, well, just coming from Geary Hill, Geary Hill Avenue down South Street.
It's the middle, it's the middle crosswalk that's the problem. And the city's done a study on that. Uh, we're actually, the conversation actually going away with that crosswalk. Because you're better off crossing with the lights. At least you're good. That middle crosswalk is, is questionable. I'll, I'll follow back up with the head of traffic, which namescape at this moment. I want to say Mohammed, I believe is the gentleman. Yeah. He's awesome. He's awesome.
Well, we need something to flash in that western, because people, they don't pay that and you can't. Some of the kids are small. They're not as tall as the others. And they got out there and the people are slamming on brakes like they're crazy.
Yeah, the, the crossing guards are covered by the city. So, I, I honestly couldn't tell you what their actual start time is. It's obviously not two thirty.
But the crossing, well, the crossing guards are better for CBS.
Those offices would have been.
Yeah, they're at the other corner.
Five, two, thirty is up.
I'm just basing it to one and two.
Yeah, those, those are the rules and also gets South, South Street's a late, a late school, three block. Nine thirty.
Those are Rives Park.
Okay. All right. So, Joe's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email and we'll work through that again.
But Joe, just could you confer with the principal as to which walkway? I think she prefers the one that's right there.
Problem is, it's just, it's just, it's complicated because of where it sits. I mean, we've had, I want to say, an adult or someone struck there recently. I, I, I want to say from maybe last year or two years ago. It is, it is a, it's a complicated one because it's in the middle of the two. But we could look at Strobes and it's not, and that's not a bad idea, you know?
Keep her in mind.
Oh, oh, yeah. No, yeah, no, we, yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that without her.
We talked to the city for the similar, uh, walkway that you're stretching in West Side because they had that accident two years ago.
Yes.
So, we've asked for that and there's a process, you know, so if they do determine that it's going to stay, you should really push for that, that system for notifying traffic to stop. That does, did help that situation.
Yeah, that was.
Under the, under the. That came from the city.
And my last thing. All board members will be receiving a package from the superintendent evaluation committee. Please open the package, read it, don't get to the end and we haven't read it and answer the faster questions and read the answers so we can be prepared at the next meeting, okay? So, you should be receiving that package sometime next week, okay?
That'll be Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay?
Great. Okay, and being as that we have no second session?
I'm making a motion if we have to.
Mrs. Cooper is.
I'm down.
Do we have a second? By Mr. Peck, if he's all those in favor?
I am.
Motion carries unanimously.